Then I would ask that people keep their comments to, not statements, but really direct questions if at all possible. Right, here we go. Right, I've got to say, health warning, this is a fire. You have to do whatever it is up there. I'll follow you, so there you go. Um, right, okay, minutes. To confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of November, which were laid on the table 30 minutes before the meeting, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Good, good start. Two. Amy, are there any apologies been received?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from Councilor Mulliner, no substitutes were available.
Okay. I would like to move that in the absence of Councilor Mulliner, Council Mike Band be appointed vice chairman for this meeting, is that agreed? Amy, yeah, Amy. Are there any declarations of interest that have been received before the meeting and whether members now have any interest to declare?
Thank you, Chairman. No interests have been received before the meeting. However, I need to advise councillors that any member of the committee or anyone who was registered to speak on item eight, which is the council tax empty homes discount, empty homes premium item, and is a landlord with a property in the area of Waverley would need to declare a peculiar interest in this item and leave the chamber while the item is considered, if that applies to anyone in the room.
Very much. Right, again, item four. Amy, are there any questions have been received from the members of the public?
Thank you, Chairman, none received.
Good. Again, are there any questions received from members?
Thank you, Chairman, also none received.
Yeah, very well. Okay. Which brings us really to the start of the meeting, which is in fact, item six, the medium term financial plan, 2019-20 to 2021-22, and general fund budget for 2019-20. I would like to invite Mr Clark, William Clark, to introduce his.
Thank you, Chairman. So Chairman, it's that time of year when we need to pull the budget together and also we review our financial plans. We put both items in this first report. So this is all focused on the general fund and we move on to the housing revenue account on the next item. So just starting with the financial plan, because that is the context for the budget for next year. Just working through some of the main sections of the report, Chairman, starting at paragraph three, what we're showing is beyond 2019-20 is a budget shortfall of some 3.8 million pounds over those three years. There's more detail in Annex one on page 25. And Amy, I just wonder if you could put a graph up on the screen, please? Thank you. So, members, this is really the, you know.
Chairman, could we have the lights at the front out? Because I can't see your thing.
Yeah, so, is it number three? Better. So, so members, this is really the. Move on to Annex one in a second. But what this graph is showing is a picture of declining government grant, an actual up until 1819 and then a projected from 1920 onwards to the point when we get to 2223 and we're expecting to have no government grant at all coming to us. So we'll be completely self-sufficient and council tax will be the main source of funding for the general fund part of our business. So the red blocks at the bottom is the budget shortfall building over those three years if we do nothing about it. And just turning to page 25, Chairman, there's a sort of that picture in numbers. The top section in that annex sets out the main sort of known projected budget, or sorry, not known, but known about, but estimated budget changes going forward over those three years. This is all beyond 1920, I'm going to come back to that year in a minute. So we've got inflation. We are estimating inflation will be around the two to two and a half percent over those three years. Our biggest inflation amounts are on pay, which is our single biggest cost, and also on our contracts, which is our second biggest cost on the general fund. So clearly there's a risk around that because we don't know where inflation's going in the longer term. But the government projections, we have no reason to believe that it will be anything different from that as we sit here now projecting out is for the two to two and a half percent. The next line down is around waste funding. This is the final tranche of the reduction in recycling credit waste income from Surrey County Council that we are withstanding. Then there's a line around housing benefit admin grant, which the government is gradually reducing as universal credit is introduced. And then the final line clearly is the biggest here. This is our residual funding that we currently get, which is 2 million pounds of business rate funding that comes back to us. And just to remind members, we collect some 38 million of business rates from the businesses in Waverley and we retain 2 million of that in funding. Now, there are two consultation papers that the government launched in December. One is around business rate funding and the other is about, the government call it fair funding and redistribution. It's all about how the government's going to slice up the overall local government funding cake over the next few years. Now, just looking through those consultation papers and knowing what we know about some of the, some of the particular components of the formula behind that, I couldn't sit here now and say that projecting that our 2 million pounds will disappear over the next three years is anything other than prudent as a working assumption. I work closely with the finance directors of the other Surrey councils and we are in contact with our other neighbours as well. And there's a very sort of commonly held position that in this part of the country, councils, district and borough councils will not fare well out of the government consultation that will ultimately lead to a change in distribution of resources. So that obviously creates a big projected shortfall for us in the medium term. Now, clearly there's uncertainty around some of those items, but we also haven't talked in here about further pressure coming down the chain from Surrey County Council and indeed other economical, sorry, other sort of economic factors that could affect us as well, given the national picture currently. So this isn't everything. We also highlight in the report, which I'll come back to, you know, a number of opportunities as well. So this isn't all gloom and doom. What we're trying to do here is paint a realistic picture of the challenge that this council will be facing in the next three to four years. So it isn't that we haven't got a plan. In fact, we do. And the plan is set out in the second section on page 25, Annex one. And this continues the financial plan that the council agreed last February, which is, there are six, five points to this. One is council tax. So there's a working assumption that the government will allow an increase and that Waverley will increase its council tax in each of the next few years' budgets and get that income into its base to help pay for the inflation on our costs. The next line is around procurement growth, sorry, procurement saving. So we will continue to try to buy more effectively, so buy the same things for less money. And we have an excellent procurement officer called Patrick, who is working very hard with that. He's done a lot of work on our main contracts and we now are going to focus him on a lot of our general spend. Then, members will be aware, because the council agreed a property investment strategy last year, that part of the overall solution will be to continue to invest in commercial property. We've done that so far in a managed and prudent way and we're getting a good income stream from properties in the borough that we've acquired. We've also turned some down where we haven't liked the deal, even though we've had a council approval. So, you know, I think we're going about this in the right way and we've got a very effective investment advisory board of councillors and officers who are advising the council on opportunities that come along. We want to get more income from this source but keep that in proportion to the overall budget. And then finally, the two items at the bottom of that table are combined. And so new and increased income we will be looking at over the next few years and building on the good work that we've already done. And also, we'll be looking at efficiency, customer service, investor save and business transformation. And we need to bring our costs down and we need to bring our customer satisfaction up. That is the challenge. It won't be easy and we don't have all the answers to finding these solutions. But we've got a number of projects underway at the moment and that is the strategy. We also have a number of other decisions that the council have taken already that will help us going forward. So the Brightwells regeneration scheme will bring in an income when that's complete within the period of this financial plan. And also, last year councillors agreed to invest in leisure centres. So that will generate a return as well. So there's quite a lot going on to help address the shortfall. And I just want to reassure members that, you know, there is a strategy in place and that the officer team is going to be working hard over the next few years to address that shortfall. Chairman, just coming back to a couple of specific points in the report, if I can just draw members' attention to. As I say, in paragraphs five, six, seven and eight, we set out some of the opportunities but also some of the risks. They're things you'd expect to see in our financial plan. Working down through the report, we talk about business rate funding, I've just touched on that. Fees and charges, paragraph 21 to 23, there's quite a long annex to this report that members are asked to sort of comment on this evening and give any comments to the executive. Generally speaking, we've only applied an inflationary increase. There's one exception, which is the green waste charge, which is set out at paragraph 22, where there's a five pound increase proposed to take the charge up to 65 pounds for the subscription service. Just coming through to the section on page 20, starting at paragraph 28, there are a number of statements that I, as your section 151 officer, have to make in terms of the robustness of the estimates, the adequacy of reserves and the effectiveness of the budget monitoring arrangements. So I've set out here that I'm satisfied with all those three elements of the finances within this report. Paragraph 39 in particular, just to draw your attention to budget monitoring. We now report budget monitoring through to all four ONS committees in a table within the overall performance report. We've just finalized quarter three and I can say that that does substantiate my statement here about being satisfied with the arrangements because we are on course to come in on budget in this year on the general fund. On paragraph 42, Chairman, council tax support scheme, members will remember, hopefully, that council tax benefit moved across, the government moved that across to a locally set scheme a few years ago now. Our scheme is working well. Members didn't make many changes to that. They wanted to continue to provide a good level of support to our most financially challenged in the borough. The scheme's working well. Our team are administering that, administering it effectively. And each year we have to say whether we're proposing any changes or not and we're proposing that we do not change that for 1920 and keep our scheme in place. On the capital side, there's a capital programme set out in Annex six. Paragraph 44 refers to that. That sets out all of the capital investment in our current assets that we have. And Annex six shows the new schemes coming forward for 1920. It's worth noting there are also schemes underway in this year and there are also some schemes that have been bought forward from the previous year or spanned the year. Now, they are already funded and if they slip into next year, their funding will come forward as well. So what members are asked to look at tonight is the scheduled Annex six, which focuses on the new schemes coming forward for next year. So finally, Chairman, just to look at the recommendations that the executive will be asked to consider on the 5th of February and recommend to council on the 12th. These are set out on page 23 and it's around the council tax increase, maintaining the council tax support, agreeing the fees and charges and then agreeing the budget and the capital programme as well. Just before I close, Chairman, can I just ask if Mr Vickers wants to just make a couple of points around the work of the overview and scrutiny budget review group? We refer to it in the report and I just thought, because this is the overview and scrutiny committee, it might be worth Peter just saying a couple of words about the work that's been going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's really important to acknowledge that a significant amount of work has been done in the last six months with the Budget Strategy Working Group that was set up in September 2017 and it started its key work in March 2018. The objective of the working group was to work alongside myself, Mr Clark and the heads of service to really get into the detail of the medium term financial plan and look ahead and properly understand what the sea changes are that are heading our way, which are reflected in this year's medium term plan. So the Budget Strategy Working Group had five work streams. It completed work stream one in August. Work stream one really underpinned the work that's in this budget strategy that we're looking at tonight. And it's really worth acknowledging the work that the four members of the scrutiny committee, the work they put into this to give us assurances that these numbers are very robust. So work stream one, the remit was to gain an understanding of the full range of services that provided, the service cost delivery and the associated income streams. So a significant amount of work was spent looking at where the income generation potential was. And then that was analysed out on a risk basis into 17 separate income streams, which, the findings of that got reported into the September executive and then it supported the work that we have tabled here tonight. So I would like to acknowledge the work done by the Budget Strategy Working Group. And just to highlight as well that there's still four work streams currently underway, which are really significant to underpin the work that the officers are doing in the next three to four years. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. First thing I'd like to say, you've actually forgotten to tell everybody that we've managed to do all this without affecting community grants at all. They remain unchanged, don't they? Is that correct, Mr Clark?
So Chairman, that's correct, yes. There's a balanced budget presented here for 1920 and there is no proposed reduction to community grants in there.
I think it's an important point to note that in fact we managed to maintain that at this level. The other thing I'd like to say at this point is that, myself and Councilor Mulliner went to an LGA event last week and it was about the new consultation documents over in fact business rate retention and in fact these new needs and assessments. And it was extremely technical, I just about got the gist. But what is frightening, when you look at our figures, is that, you know, we've got 50% retention, you know. We collect 18 million, which is twice the amount that we collect in council tax. We keep 2 million, and the rest goes elsewhere. And with needs and assessments, that could even get even lower. So just bear that in mind in context that, you know, that we collect a lot of money but we don't keep very much for ourselves, do we? But I think that's something that came home to me quite dramatically. Anyway, okay, perhaps it's time to talk about the debate, is it? Yeah. Right. Right, I posed a number of questions to you, Mr Clark, which you've now answered to me in detail, which I'm quite satisfied with. And in fact, all members who were members of the committee will have had answers by the email, I think, this afternoon about those. One of those was a question, in fact, from Councilholder. And have you seen the answer, Council? Yes?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, my main concern is the investment property board. Local authorities last year borrowed from the Public Works Loan Board a total sum of 5.7 billion. It's become the biggest game in town. And, sorry, this is over the last 10 years, 5.7 billion. Last year it was 1.78 billion. And the trouble is now that you have several local authorities bidding for the same property, which is pushing the property prices up and isn't giving good value for money. My main concern is that by putting the new homes bonus into the property investment fund, we have very little likelihood of finding good worthwhile properties, it's perhaps better to reduce the budget shortfall by the new homes bonus of 1.16, therefore reducing the budget shortfall to a mere 400,000 pounds. I can't see the value in putting the new homes bonus into the property investment board.
Ask Mr Clark another question directly.
So Chairman, a couple of points there. So firstly, there is no certainty around new homes bonus going forward. The government have made that clear. We're right at the end now of our four-year spending review period, about to go into a new one. And the new homes bonus, our new homes bonus has halved over the last three years. And I think Waverley was very prudent to agree a policy a few years ago, when new homes bonus came in, of not relying on new homes bonus to balance his budget. A lot of councils did and that's just added to their troubles and their challenges. And what Waverley said was it would invest that in anything that would generate a revenue. So before the investment board, we called it an investor save pot and we put that in. But now we've got a proper strategy with objectives and proper criteria and good governance around that. Then the council decided to put its new homes bonus into there. So it's not a guaranteed source going forward. The council can, sorry, the council, the government can, with very short notice, actually switch off new homes bonus or change some of the component parts. And one of the components is a threshold, which they say below which you receive no new homes bonus. And this is a threshold, a percentage of new properties built in your, not by the council but built overall in your borough, is now an assumed threshold below which you receive no new homes bonus, above which you start to receive it. Now, that's currently at 0.4%. The government could change that and they said they would last year and thankfully they didn't. They could just change that to 0.6 or 1% or anything. Some of the Surrey councils don't get any new homes bonus now because of that threshold, because they're not seeing that sort of growth. So I'm glad we didn't rely on it and I would really advise against using that to support the revenue budget. I think it's a sound policy to have that going into an income earning area where we have a strategy and we can control the spend of that and generate a revenue to support the revenue budget.
Do you want to come back, Councilor? The other councillor who wrote to me, well, wrote to me was councillor Seaborn. Would you like to ask anything else or a question?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, my query was around fees and charges and it was, building on a point that was made in several of the sessions last year in that the information we're given in the tables on fees and charges is literally just last year's cost, its VAT status and a proposal to increase by a certain amount. We have no feel for the relative value of each line item. And so officers kind of responded to that but I'm not clear what was discussed in the budget working group on that. I contacted Councilor Mulliner before the meeting and he said not very much. So there may be a, maybe some misunderstanding here. But we're not going to get the kind of information I would like to see in time to have any impact on this budget and I don't think that's appropriate. But I would like this committee to consider examining further the basis on which we set our fees and charges because, you know, we don't know what the basis is in the papers we're given. Some of them will be mandatory government fees and they'll be fixed and we can't do much about it. Some will be worthy services that we should probably be delivering at cost. Others might be, might even be subsidised. But others might be just genuine market opportunities where we could look at a bigger margin. So I'm not clear how the margin that we've applied has been derived. And, you know, since I've been a councillor, the general approach has been the one we're applying tonight, where you take last year's fee or charge and then add a percentage to it. And I think there's a real risk that we've possibly lost track of what the original basis for setting the base cost was. Now, I'm quite happy for officers to tell me in a different forum that that's all under control and it should be easily done if it is under control. But if it's not, I think we have a declared intent as a council to get much more commercially smart. And being commercially smart is around actually understanding the cost base of each of our charges and then having a policy for deriving an appropriate ultimate fee or charge that we're going to put in our fees for the next year. And at the moment, what we're seeing is last year's fee plus a percentage, which is fairly close to inflation. So I've made my point. I'm not hugely happy on the basis of the information we've been provided to determine whether these numbers are good or could be better. But I think I'd appreciate that it's noted that this may be an opportunity for further work in the future. Or colleagues who sit on the working group might be able to correct me and tell me that work's been done. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I mean, I share your concern. I think this has grown like topsies. We've got so many charges and you're beginning to wonder, you know, what comes in each one. And like, for example, taxes. How do you compare against Guildford, which is a very interesting area? So I would like to see, I personally would like to see a total review of the, you know, not in the coming year of how we do these charges. I think that's something we would like to take forward to the executive. Right, councillor?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Excuse me. I was going to raise exactly the same point. I just wish to support councillor Seaborn in his comments. I think it's really rather inappropriate to expect us to form any view on these charges when we have no idea of the volume. I've mentioned this at least once and I think twice before, maybe for two budgets, both in this committee and elsewhere. And people seem to agree that, yes, it would be useful to have these figures and we still haven't got them. It may seem quite a chore because there are pages of this stuff, but the figures must exist. Someone must know how many. I think the example I've taken before, in an attempt to inject a little lightness into proceedings, was the extermination of squirrels or whatever it is we do to them for which we charge. I can't remember the figure, it's about 113 quid. I see it's now going to be reduced to zero. I hope that's not the result of my comment. I didn't expect it to have that effect. But really, in order to establish whether that's a reasonable charge or not, one needs to know whether we do five a year or 5,000. I have no idea. It really would be useful to see the figures on all these charges. They must exist. It must be possible to reproduce them. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we need to overlabor this point but I mean, it's quite true, yeah. I just think it's just grown and grown and grown, firstly. And I think all we need to do is go back. I'd like to see a recommendation from this committee that review the whole fees and charges structure for next year. Simple as that, really.
Thank you, Chairman. It seems to me we should be making two formal recommendations in that case. One, that we should invite the officers to add to the papers a schedule showing the quantum of what's actually received from all these individual fees and charges. And the second thing, recommend that review of the fees and charges is a work, I think, work stream for the Value for Money ONS during the forthcoming year. So we've got two particular aspects of this. First, let's get the detail out on the table and then have a work stream which actually ploughs through them and understands in more detail and may make further recommendations in due course.
Mr Clark, you want to come in? No?
No, thank you, Chairman. I'd welcome that review and that councillor input as well.
Are there any other members of the Value for Money and Customer Service? Oh, Mr Brown again?
Thanks for letting me come back very briefly. Yes, we could have a review. But since, I know I've mentioned this in previous years and nothing has happened, why can't you have the figures now? They must exist. They can be capable of being churned out from a spreadsheet. I presume that is where all these come from. With some ease, I would hope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brown. The point is taken and I've taken the point and I've been given some information already, which you should have got a copy of, omitting that in great detail. But I think the point is we're going to agree at this meeting for next year that this is going to be done. Okay? Simple as that, really. Anyone else on the committee? Councillor Ziegler, are you happy to say?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I totally agree with my fellow councillors regarding that. And what. And what I would say, that if it's the breakdown and where is it channeling to the amount of money as well, would be much more appreciated as well, because we know the money is coming in, but where it's channeled up, we would like that detail in detail as well. Thank you.
Right, I shall now move to other people who have asked to speak, and I shall start with inviting councillor Jet Hall, who is the, in fact, portfolio holder for this particular...
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, Graham Clark covered the vast majority of the main points in the budget and also covered the very large risks which we expect to see in the next three years. As you said, Mr Chairman, there is no reduction in grants in this budget. There is also no rise in car parking, and there's no cuts in services. So, you know, the only rise is around £10 a week per bandee property. So this budget maintains services. It only raises council tax by a very small amount, and as you said, it keeps grants. And the reason we've got to be robust, Mr Chairman, is because we need to be able to withstand if these shocks hit our accounts. So if £2 million is taken away in stages, or if the £800,000 negative grant is taken by government. So it's very important that we prepare for that going forward, so we're ready for the risks, and do all this whilst not cutting services and not cutting grants to our communities.
Right, I have a list of all the people who've put down to speak. I'll go through them. Councillor Ward, you should speak.
Thank you, Chairman. I put my name in, I'd speak for everything because we were told we had to if we wanted to say anything. But I think enough points have been made on this for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to make a comment on new homes bonus and perhaps ask a question. Firstly, I noticed that in the comparison between last year and this year, the new homes bonus appears to have gone down, and the number of houses we're supposed to be building is supposed to be going up. So I'd just like to ask the officers why that is the case. And that really leads to my question. What assumptions are we making about in which this figure is based? Is it based on the local plan, number of houses projected, or are we more cautious than that? Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, thank you for the question. Chairman, paragraph 17 explains the reduction. The reduction, you're absolutely right, councillor MacLeod, it sort of goes against the flow of new homes, but it comes, the reduction is entirely as a result of the government changing the formula for calculating the new homes bonus. And also, as we say in here, it moves, the calculations moved away from the previously promised legacy payments, which were originally promised for six years, and went down now to keeping those for four years rather than six. So that's why the reductions happen. And also, this introduction of the growth threshold has just taken some of the new homes bonus out of the equation completely. That didn't exist when new homes bonus started, and three years ago, we were receiving over £2 million a year of new homes bonus. So basically, the government's changed that. And as we've said in here, our forecast figure for the three-year period actually reduced by three and a half million as a result of the government's change. And we are expecting more change. The government have said, because they fund new homes bonus from the whole business rates pot, when they review business rates, new homes bonus, it could either be a casualty or it could come back in a different form with another set of sort of fairly complex calculations behind it. So unfortunately, we just don't know, which is one of the reasons why, you know, again, to come back to our prudent policy of not relying on it, because it isn't guaranteed into the future.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I just also start by thanking Graham and Peter for taking me through this in such detail yesterday? It was extremely helpful to go through this in that depth. I also had some questions about fees and charges, many of which councillor Seaborn has actually dealt with. This might just be me not understanding, but where actually in this graph, and actually in the main table, do these fees and charges actually come in? Because I can't see where they actually apply in terms of the income to the revenue budget. So it's not just a case of not understanding how much they are. Is there anything coming into it, or have I just completely missed that? My second question is about the reduction in community grants. Now, I agree, that's great that that's not being reduced, but can we just also comment on the fact that their workload is actually going to likely be increasing quite dramatically, particularly in regards to universal credit? So is there literally nothing we can do to increase their grant, considering their work is going to increase? My only other point is just regarding councillor Holder's point on new homes bonus, other than investment in other property, which I agree suffers from some issues and risk, are there any other things that we could sensibly use the money on, other than, as you say, it's not a good idea to use it to prop up the shortfall? Are there any other, more suitable than investment purposes, we could use that money on, say, for example, an increase in community investment grant? Thank you.
Chairman, just a question on the overall income. So that shows government funding. All of the income for fees and charges, just looking at Annex Two on page... Twenty-seven, thank you. These budgets are net expenditure budgets. There's a lot of income, there's a huge amount of detail behind this, and that will be, you know, published on our website. Every year, we publish a full budget book with all of the detail, and all of that income was behind there. And if members, you know, want any more detail behind any of this between now and council, it would be very easy for us to provide that in graphical or table form, so we can do that. But that's where that income sits. I think on the new homes bonus front, well, before the investment strategy was approved, we spent some of our new homes bonus investing in our services. We spent some of it on improving the waste and recycling service, which generated a significant cost-saving. So as long as we get a return from it, then that sort of sits with Waverley's overall policy. But at the moment, we do have a very specific policy of putting new homes bonus into our property investment pot. Now, the government, so the council can change that if it wishes, and be more general around how it spends its new homes bonus, but that is what the council has agreed to do in its financial and its property strategy at the moment, because that's where we're going to generate the best return on that money.
Thank you. Also, councillor Forl, I did ask for some more information on the breakdown of revenue, which has been supplied in email and you may not have received it yet. Okay, I know, I think, I take the point about the community grants. I think, you know, in the form of things, I think the council here is desperate trying not to reduce grants, and if there's any chance of increasing them, then I would certainly back it. But I think caution is the word at the moment, I think.
Chair, if I may, may I request that we have the answers that the committee received to the questions, because many of those questions were very good questions.
Yeah, 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 sure, sure. Is that, can't we hear me? Yes. Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. I knew there'd be something I wanted to know, and I think I know the answer to this question, but just to make sure, the graph I have copying that on page 14 looks quite different. Could someone tell me why?
Mr Clark?
Yes, thank you. The graph on the screen is the correct one, that shows the shortfall growing rather than reducing. Originally, we'd put the graph in here showing the strategy kicking in and reducing the shortfall, but then, on reflection, I think to show the picture before we start applying the mitigating measures is more sensible. So please look at that graph rather than the one in the report. I meant to say that in my introduction.
Could I just make sure? So the red blob at the end is what you lose in that year, plus the two red blobs on the left. Is that correct?
So the red blobs is the cumulative budget shortfall growing up until the 3.8 million. So if we did nothing, that's the sort of, if you like, the budget overdraft position that would be in at the end of that three-year period.
Right. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I was going to just draw attention to that particular graph, which is on page 13, is it, of our, page 14, paragraph four, because it does show us, well, it looks a little bit worrying perhaps to some people, that might just be a matter of perception at first glance, but that we know we've got this 3.8 million, or we've worked out that we've got a £3.8 million shortfall, and we're going to do lots about it next year, presumably, because that's where most of it is going to have to be solved, that's where most of that deficit appears from. And we're not doing anything about it this year. That's what it looks like, because there isn't, you know what I mean? And I know that's not exactly the case, but nevertheless, you know, there is a question of have we done enough this year? I fully appreciate that the working group has done a lot of hard work, and that's really is on the medium-term financial plan rather than on this particular budget. I mean, but we do this every year. Every year, it's too much work for us to solve all the problems within the space of the few months before the budget comes in. And so the real hard cuts, the stuff that's really going to deliver the savings, never really comes about. And I am a little bit concerned whether the medium-term financial plan is realistic. I'm not saying anyone's trying to pull the wool over our eyes. I'm saying that we are assuming that we're going to be able to make big cuts in the future, which is going to solve this. And anyone sat at home is going to be thinking to themselves, well, if you can find them in six months' time, why haven't you found them last year or the year before? Why haven't you made those cuts? If it's realistic to expect that we can do it, you know, or do we have to, you know, bring in consultants to do it, or whatever, I won't mention elections because this is VFM, but this is ONS. But nevertheless, you know, do we need to get different eyes looking at this for us in order to make those big cuts? It's what business does, they get someone else in to blame it on when they're getting rid of, you know, top layers of staff and whatever it happens to be. But, you know, whatever's got to be done to try and solve this, because there is a big deficit for us to worry about. So, you know, are we just being hopeful that there's going to be a government rethink, like we've won from this time round? I mean, this year, this would have been a horrendous budget if it hadn't been for the fact the government had backtracked on a negative grant. So, you know, we are relatively lucky. I'm concerned that we're saying inflation's 2%, we're going to put it up 3%. In fact, if you look at paragraph 14 of the, sorry, paragraph 14, it says, ends up with, "It is therefore vital that the maximum available increase is made each year." I don't like that at all. That makes me really uncomfortable for us to be saying we are milking the people we serve every year, and we're going to do it forever, and they're going to have to get used to it. You know, and I know we're not saying instead of making any efficiency savings or cutting waste and that sort of thing, it's been an ongoing process for many years, but we do need to do something radical. Paragraph 10 says we were going to have this radical rethink. I don't think we've had that yet, but obviously, it's a very tough task. I'm not criticising anyone, but it's something that's got to be faced up to. Paragraph 13 says significant reductions in service costs will need to be achieved. You know, have we identified where the cuts are going to be made is really a question there. Let me see, what else? Oh, right. Now, if I can go into a little bit of detail, one of the issues that I saw in the fees and charges, they've been raised by others, and I thank them for going through it and looking at it, but on page, for instance, let's say on page 43, we're going to be giving away the local plan and the maps, where we'd make quite sizable charges. At the top, I think it is, of page 43. Am I right? Maybe it's another page. Sorry, I was trying to work out the pages from my, because it's got different page numbers, obviously, on the individual files that I made my notes from. It's... Thirty-eight, okay. Yeah, it says at the top, we're going to be giving away, I mean, 100,000 people want a local plan free and a load of maps. Are we doing that, or is that just a mistake that we haven't done that? The same, I think it was councillor Round mentioned, that the animal care establishments, I've noted here, page 54, but I bet I got that wrong. I also noted there's no comparison with last year's charges on page 53. So what have we got?
Councillor Hyman, I think we're all concerned about the appendix four schedules, and I think we've got to keep our things in perspective here, don't we? I mean, we're talking about, you know, I mean, relative to this moment. I mean, I picked up the local plan as well, but I'd rather defer that to the people who are now going to look at the whole thing on block, basically, rather than anything else.
We have a similar issue with all the animal care establishments. We've been told that it appears there that where we've been charging £1,000 to the one zoo that we've got somewhere, registered zoo, we're no longer going to charge anything to those, and we're no longer going to charge anything for other looking after animals establishments, animal care establishments. And then if you go to the previous page, you think, well, hang on, we're making big charges to these people, but if they decide they don't call themselves a pet shop, or they do, or they call themselves something different, then they can get out the charges. It just seems a bit odd to me, and I'm not entirely sure how it works. Now, I don't want to go into a great deal of detail, but I haven't seen the answers that members received to their questions. So we haven't got a budget data book, which we last saw in 2016, where all the background figures come from. So it's very difficult to actually do anything useful at this meeting, I feel, and perhaps we can do better at the executive meeting, when we've got more information. There's certainly comparisons with previous years on rises in fees and charges and incomes. Thank you, Chairman.
I don't think anybody disagrees here, Councillor Hyman. I'm just saying that, you know, I think we've all agreed here that we're going to review this quite, you know, from scratch. And I take the points that you make, but I think there are sayings, you know, look after the pennies and the pounds look after themselves, or is it penny, well, you know, penny foolish, and whatever. But, yeah, okay, let's go back to your main question, really, which was, you know, I think what Mr Clark has pointed out is the most pessimistic scenario of all, I think, actually, in the sense of we're going to use all business grants potentially, aren't we? In yours, in so and so. So it's not a fact of that, I think it's a very cautious approach. Some might say too cautious, but I think it's cautious, but at least it knows where we stand, in my opinion, and that's my opinion. I mean, and therefore, it should be better than that. And in fact, you know, I come back to the point, really, you know, we've got all this money in business rates, and we receive very little of it, really, but there we are. I do not think at this stage, I think we've been fairly prudent in the budget forecast. I do not envisage all being well that we'll be in a cut situation, and the councillor should be commended for that, personally. Well, there we are.
Thank you, Chairman. And I can understand councillor Hyman's concern about the impact of the significance of the deficit for next year to be closed, but I think we have to remember that, you know, actually, a lot of work has been done this year. If we go back to earlier this year, and paragraph 27, I think, sets it out, you know, we're projecting a 1.5 million shortfall this year. And the work which our council, our executive and officers have done is to close that gap. So I think, you know, I would consider, yes, you know, you're absolutely right. I mean, you don't want to wait till next year to start doing the thing, but I think we have to say, and from my perspective, you know, a major, you know, effort has been made this year to bridge what was forecast for this year, which is part of, to my mind, the medium-term financial strategy. Yeah, I agree. You know, next year looks horrendous, but as the chairman has just said, hopefully that is the worst-case scenario. But I think he's absolutely right and proper at this stage to be planning for the worst-case scenario. So if it's anything better than that, then we've got some, you know, extra revenue reserve to deal with future problems. So I agree with the sentiment, but I think actually we are on course to hit quite a, have been on course with this budget, to actually deal with what appeared to be a very large potential deficit earlier on in the year. And I, personally, I congratulate the officers and the executive for actually getting us to this position at this time. Thank you, Chair.
I would also like to add, as a general point, that I believe Surrey advertised a recent proposal, which showed that Weryburg Council, in fact, was only one of three local authorities in Surrey, in Kensington, which had not made any borrowings to buy property at ludicrous prices. So we ought to bear that in mind as well. So it was a very cautious, cautious approach, which at this time seems appropriate. Hyman.
So just to caveat that final statement that you made there in respect to the borrowing, somewhere in this, I'm absolutely sure it says that we are allowing ourselves to borrow money, and we're going to set up a housing, a property company in order to be able to take on other investments. So, you know, I do have a concern overall that we're taking new homes bonus. Let's take an example from the Brightwell scheme, where, you know, that was put through two, three years ago, in May 2016, in a council meeting, on the basis of the new homes bonus being what the government originally said it would be. We weren't to know they were going to con us, and, well, we should have guessed, I guess, I suppose. We weren't to know... I suppose, we weren't to know at the time that it was going to be reduced. But we were planning our budgets at the time and over the past two or three years, you know, that we, you know, people who have been in the debates have heard, we've been constantly told we're going to get money from East Street, which is going to help shore things up and save our necks in the coming future, and from other investments. Now, obviously, we're not going to get that sort of same amount of new homes bonus out of the East Street scheme, so we're not going to be getting that sort of income, it could be a while before we get letting's income from it. But if we're expecting money from new homes bonus to be, we've now changed our policy so that all of the new homes bonus money goes straight into an investment fund effectively to buy property with, to buy commercial property with, rather than use it for revenue side. If we're going to assume that we're going to have that money from new homes bonus for East Street, which we may not, we know it's less than we thought it was going to be, so what are we assuming it's going to be? If we are then going to assume that we can take that money, which is uncertain, and we're assuming that we're going to be able to invest that into a property which will provide a return, and that's a very big if on the will provide a return when you consider the, you know, possibility of interest rate rises and things like that. So, you know, Chairman, we seem to be relying, almost upon this scheme that we're creating ourselves, where we're relying upon income assumptions in order to create more money by reinvesting it, we're reinvesting, you know, original investments, so to speak. And it could leave us with a big hole if anything were to go wrong, because if one of them goes wrong, it's likely that all of them go wrong. So it's, it was called compounding, Chairman, it's the way to get rich or extremely broke, isn't it? Depending whether things go right or wrong. But that is a concern, Chairman, we need to be a bit careful about that, thanks.
I'll come back to that, councillor Hyman, and say, as Chair of Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee, we keep these under quite tight control, actually, I think it's fair to say. In fact, the criteria for other investments is in fact quite tight, some might say it might sort of leave it a bit, but I mean, we are, it's not, we're not, I was just trying to say, we're not spellthorn, for example, quote one example, or any other law, I mean, it is quite remarkable, actually, how can, well, I use the word conservative as a small c, if you know what I mean. And how the authority has done it, well, if you have concerns, then I think Mr Graham and Mr, sorry, Mr Graham, Mr Clark and Mr Vickers will be more than happy to spend time going through detail with you, yes? Anybody else wish to speak? All this, councillors?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, my earlier comments were in a specific response to being invited to speak on an earlier question. I had a second point relating to internal consistency of some of the documentation, particularly annexes one, three and five. So annex three shows a target increase in property income of 200,000 and an increase in costs of managing property of 80,000. So the management cost increase suggests an increase in activity, and the increased revenue suggests that either further investments are going to be made or we're going to be putting up our rentals for the properties that we've already got. But annex five shows the Investment Advisory Board balance increasing each year, but no spend. And I appreciate that predicting spend is challenging because we're opportunity constrained. However, we are effectively inflating the general fund total of reserves and balances, even though we, we've set out in our property strategy that we're going to be funding 20% of the target spend by 2020 to 21 of 30 million from the Property Investment Fund. So on the one hand, we've put a document in place that says that we're going to be spending the money, but annex five is saying, and I can understand why it's saying that, you know, we're not going to be spending, but reality is we're predicting that we will be, and we're going to end up with a false position in our long term plan of more reserves or more balance than is actually going to exist. Perhaps I'll just care to comment on that, this is just around consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, I mean, take that point, and on annex five, the line Investment Advisory Board, that is simply the projected new homes bonus coming into the pot, it will be spent. Now clearly you can't buy a lot for those sorts of, you know, that sort of money, and we, coming back to councillor Hyman's point, I mean, we will borrow as well, and we've had two or three opportunities recently that we had council approval to borrow and to acquire. When we got into due diligence, as I said earlier, we couldn't get the deal that was right for Waverley and that fitted with the strategy, so we walked away and that was the right thing to do. But had it all come together, we would have gone to the market and borrowed some money and that's absolutely fine, it's well within the strategy and treasury and our investment strategy. We haven't done yet, and when we do, we will be contributing this money into it as well. But, you know, 1.1 million pounds a year doesn't buy you a lot in property, so we will need to top that up in borrowing. And take the point about the presentation earlier and we'll look at that before the papers go off to the executive chairman, yeah, thank you.
Now to follows.
Thank you, Chair. If I may ask, Graham, through you, can you just give us an idea of what sort of target yield you're expecting on some of this investment? Because I think councillor Holder's point about the fact that it is a very competitive market, and as you mentioned, this is not going to buy a lot of land or property, what sort of yield are you targeting for this investment?
So Waverley's property strategy is targeting a return after borrowing costs of no less than 2%. Yeah, so if we're using our own money without borrowing, then we'll be looking about 6% or 7%. But just to sort of draw, you know, another type of investment into this, I mentioned earlier about our spend on our leisure centres, for example. So this is money where we're going to use our own capital receipts on our leisure centres and through the reduced management fee, there's an equivalent of sort of 8% to 10% return there. So that's another way in which we're utilizing our capital resource to generate a revenue return, it's not all about commercial property.
Does any other councillor wish to speak? For a favor, hold your peace? No. Right. The Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee is asked to review the report which is done and recommendations from my executives to councillor set out in the report and agree comments before to the executive, which are laid out on page 23. Apart from, I'd like to make amendments to the thing, point three, which is approve the fees and charges, I show in annex four, and add to that we show the two points that my friend councillor banned, add it. Is that agreed? Right. I think so. Right, move on to the next item. Okay, next item. Does anybody wish to, bye bye, adios. If there's anything to know, dig us out, will you? Moving on to item seven, Housing Revenue Account Business Plan, Revenue Budget and Capital Programme, I'll invite again Mr.
Thank you, Chairman. So a much shorter introduction here, and Hugh Magstaff and Andrew are here to take any questions on this, this is, you know, very much their service, but tonight presented in a financial report. So, Jim, there's a set of papers here, there's a business plan, which we're in year six of 30, I think, on the business plan and constantly reviewing that. The context here is that, you know, the government made some pretty big changes to some rules and regulations around housing revenue account two or three years ago. The officer team, working with the portfolio holder and other councillors, did an excellent job of realigning the whole business plan, putting it on a really sound footing for going forward, taking account of the impact of some of those changes, like the minus 1% on rent for four years, and some of the other welfare reforms etc that came in. And so what's before members tonight is a robust business plan, a set of fees and charges around the housing service, and then some pretty comprehensive capital programmes around investing in our own stock, which we call the core capital programme, and then the new affordable homes programme, stock remodelling programme, and then finally in annex five, similarly to the general fund report, a summary of the projected reserves. So I think that the headline is, Chairman, that we are expecting, because the government's indicated but not confirmed yet, to be able to apply rent increase again from 2021, and that's modelled into the business plan. There is enough money in the housing revenue account at the moment to deliver the capital programme for the next probably two to four years. And beyond that, we will need to start looking at refreshing debt structure potentially and borrowing some new money. But at the moment, there is sufficient funds here in the short to medium term to be able to meet the capital needs of the housing revenue account. So, Chairman, there are a number of aspects to the reports I've just outlined, so any comments and questions from members? Members aren't being asked to take a decision about rent increase for 1920 because we're in the final year of the four year minus 1% imposed from the government. So, Chairman, I'll leave my introduction at that and allow members to ask questions of myself or any of the colleagues here.
Right. First I'll ask if any members of the Valued Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee wish to speak? Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. As with the previous set of documents, you know, well done to officers and the executive members that have produced this, it's, you know, it's great work and very impressive. So, you know, as usual, I'm down in the weeds worrying about detail. Annex one, first line has got net dwelling rent and it shows us income growth, which has just been explained. The numbers here are going to be a combination of rent increases and rent from new properties which are being built and occupied each year. And personally, I would find it quite useful in terms of producing heightened awareness for colleagues of the impact of all the good work we're doing in investing in new properties, to have the income from new properties each year brought out. So we see the same total, but an extra line, so that we see the impact of rent increases and we see the impact of investment. And the more awareness we have, heightened awareness we have of the benefits of the investment, I think, you know, the more likely we're going to be less shy of making that investment. So officers might like to comment on that suggestion, but I'd certainly find it helpful. In the same way as I would have found it useful for the point I made previously about the property investment, where some of the increase we're going to get each year is from rent increases and some of it will be from increased investment in the properties, just having that breakout so we can see the benefits of what we're doing, is point one. Second one, under principal repayment in annex one, in 2022 to 23, we suddenly leap from 4 million, or 4 to 5 million repayment a year, to nearly 8 million in 2022 to 23. Can you just confirm that that is an intended activity and explain why? Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, if I start and Mr Magstaff can always join in, the, yeah, so there are figures behind the figures and there's a breakdown, and I think we can easily break that dwelling rent figure down, and that would also illustrate actually the net loss from right to buy, as well as the gain from new build. On the principal repayment, that is correct, when Waverley took out its 180 million pounds of debt four years ago, it deliberately set out to structure that debt so that the first few years we would have no principal repayment, and then that principal repayment would grow in sort of five year blocks. And that was very intentional on the council's behalf, so that we would be able to kickstart our new build programme with the accumulated surpluses coming from the business plan, you know, without that debt kicking in too early. And that's been, in my view, quite a successful approach. All the debt was fixed term and fixed interest rate, so there's no uncertainty around that. And in another five years' time, that principal grows again, there is another sort of step change. So the idea was we could have a lot of front load spending. Now, there will be an opportunity later on into the business plan, certainly the council have said when the rent increases come back in to look to restructure debt if the capital programme and the demands need that. So, Hugh, was there anything you wanted to add at all?
Chair, so this is an important model for us that we need to actually, we're looking to develop. We have the next resource, Lindsay Kennedy, she's our new housing finance manager, and what we're looking to do is to be able to answer the questions like councillor Seaborn has raised, and actually use this as a scenario model, an actual something we can actually build different scenarios on, and so if we decreased rents in certain areas or made efficiencies here, what that could deliver going long term. So it'd be good to understand what the housing ONS require, what this committee require in terms of this model, as Lindsay has developed it, and we can make it more transparent, the different costs or income that are attributable to that line, because as I say, that first line is quite a complex line in terms of the different ins and outs that are there. So hopefully, we will be coming back to members with a model that does give that transparency and to help make decisions.
Very much. Any other member of the Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee wish to comment? No? Okay. King, I think, was just.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee, for letting me speak. There's a few points that I'd quite like to make. First of all, talking about the business plan, although it was disappointing that we lost some of the stability on it with the rent reduction, we've done incredibly well, our officers have done incredibly well, on actually balancing, maintaining our property and improving our existing housing stock against delivering new property. And I think that's to be commended, but there is still a huge amount of flexibility, and I think that's the key thing to note. Whatever gets chucked at us, I think we have the flexibility in the business plan to meet whatever those needs might be. Members also might like to note that we do not propose to increase garage rents this year, that's a piece of good news. The garage stock is being improved, I have to say, it has been neglected for some time due to lack of resources, they're now being improved, and the rate of return on rents is going up because we've got less void garages, which is why you see a much more stable target figure in there. I commend the report to you, thank you.
Any other person wish to speak on this item? Now to follows.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I also completely second councillor Seaborn's comments regarding the splitting out of those lines, that's what I was going to raise that question to. Could you also just let me know about housing maintenance growth? So it's going up from 5.5 to 5.9, nearly 6. Is that growth proportionate to the number of housing, the actual housing growth in stock that we have? I'm just wondering how that formula is calculated. And secondly, the other costs bucket, what does that actually include in terms of, as it's over half million pounds, I'm just curious? Thank you.
Do you want to do the first point? Is that the pension deficit, that line?
So all the housing maintenance will be in line with, as you say, the property growth and in terms of the inflation costs as well, so that will be built into that line. But as I say, again, we can provide you with more details of how that's calculated going forward. I think it's rather just off the cuff, is there is detailed calculations behind that, and what we need to give is that transparency going forward.
Any other person wish to speak on this? Councillor Hyman.
Jim, do you want to ask the other? So, Chairman, there's a historical pension fund deficit that all local authorities have, it goes right the way back to government policy 20, 25 years ago around the statutory pension scheme for local authorities, not the pensions that individuals receive, but the funding that pension funds have. And there's a historical catch up cost that the general fund and the housing revenue account pick up, and so that's reflected in the business plan. And that is a lot of money, and it will continue until such times the pension fund deficit has been addressed. And there's nothing we can do about that, I'm afraid, it's set out in legislation and most local. It's set out in legislation and most local authorities are facing the same issue.
If I may, Chair, whilst I completely accept that's totally, totally fine, obviously, could it be highlighted in these reports going forward? Because that's all, there's a few other costs, some are starred and footnoted, this one particularly isn't. It would just be nice to know that and I'm sure people who are there reading the detail would, I'm sure, ask the same question. Thank you.
You, councillor Hyman, you want to speak?
Yes, Chairman, I don't think there's any need to declare an interest or anything because there's no changes in charges being proposed here. But I want to make it absolutely clear, I think, because, you know, for anybody who's watching, that there is no increase in rents in this year. It's the government dictat, we're four years, we're in the final of the four years where rents have to be reduced by one percent. And I think the government's intention was to ensure that they keep down benefits bill costs because half of our tenants are on benefits in some way or another, I believe, is roughly speaking. Graham's nodding there. So, yes, we, everybody, I think, would support that as a general direction, but, you know, it does make things difficult and has meant revising the business plan a little. And again, as with the general fund, we are entirely at the mercy of the government's grants funding. So, you know, I know our staff have a very difficult job putting this together, they've done the best job they can, but nothing can be certain because it's entirely down to what the government decide they're going to do. Instead of having a six-year repayment holiday on this, on the borrowing in the first place, on the £180 million borrowing, you know, if we had paid off our, or been paying down our debt, that could have been of great benefit to us. But we're in a government system where we could easily have been punished for doing so because if we ended up with more money out of it for doing the right thing, they could simply come back and take more money off of us in a different direction. So, it is incredibly difficult to know how to run this for our best benefit because the government can always come around and sort us out and take away any benefits we've sorted out for ourselves by being really tough and, you know, standing by principles. So, it is difficult to do, but I'm very happy with what we've got in front of us for the time being. I wouldn't be particularly keen on the idea of borrowing more, increasing the borrowing. But again, you know, if the world's going to collapse eventually because of the enormous debt that we can't pay off, and I think we just about passed that level, then we might as well go mad and just borrow our money, spend it on gold, stick it in a cupboard downstairs. But this is good. I don't think, there is one or two things about fees and charges, costs of letters to leaseholders and that sort of thing, which I will take up separately outside of the meeting with the officers because I think I might have misunderstood them. But no, I think this is very good. We appear to be charging for contact to tenants where there are problems with the property and I assume that if there's problems with the property, then that's the council's problem. So, why are we charging the tenant for us writing to them? And they've got quite large charges for just writing a letter about something which is probably Waverley's problem anyway. But, you know, apart from that, I think we, and Raul Rose mentioned on page four, but again, we'll argue about that somewhere else. Thank you very much, I think this is good. I think a lot of hard work's gone into this and nobody can complain about it anyway. Thanks, bye.
Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. When I was chairman of the Audit Committee, which is about 10 years ago now, we had a proposal to reduce the amount of the older properties that were below the decent home standard within a certain period of years. And so I'm rather surprised that we're still spending £800,000 or proposing to spend £800,000 on kitchens and bathrooms. I would have thought by now we would have renovated all those older properties and be on a much more even keel. And I'd like to know exactly how many more older properties need to be done before we can say that all our properties reach the decent home standard.
Could I ask, councillor, Mr Magstaff, then?
Up to a couple of years ago, all our homes did meet the decent home standard. We reduced our investment into kitchens and bathrooms because of the rent reduction. I'm afraid properties like us all go old and, but we were able then to actually do repairs and do maintenance and, for example, kitchens and bathrooms. So, in fact, there may be peaks and troughs going forward, but we will always need a kitchen and bathrooms renewal programme. We have an asset management team who do surveys of our properties, so we're able to do some prediction of that spend and that spend will go into this model. So, going forward, we will always need to spend money on our properties and it could be peaks and troughs around kitchens, bathrooms, it could be roofs, it could be windows, but we will always have to have a substantial investment in our properties and the business model allows us to do that going forward.
Councillor King, yes? The value for money and customer service overview and scrutiny committee is asked to review the report and recommendations from my executive council are set out in the report and agreed comments to be forwarded to the executive. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. We move on. Agenda item eight, council tax, empty homes discount and empty homes premium. Mr Clark, you're turning again. Oh, Mr Vickers, look.
Thank you, Chairman. This report's a proposal to withdraw the empty homes discount, which currently is 50% for six months substantially on furnished properties. The purpose of the proposal is to support the corporate plan, which includes to encourage the quicker turnaround of properties in the borough to help ease the housing shortage. Currently, Waverley has a generous scheme at 50% for six months and this is a direct cost to all council taxpayers in the borough to support that. The report shows that most councils actually have no discount scheme, there's some details in the report that gives that information. So, effectively, it affects up to about 600 at the most properties at any one point in time and within the borough out of about 52,000 dwellings. This doesn't mean, withdrawing the discount doesn't mean that property owners, landlords experiencing genuine hardship and financial difficulties would be left with an extra burden. We do have a hardship scheme and it's referred to in the report in terms of helping out those in genuine need. So, just open to questions on this, Chairman.
Councillor King, did you wish to speak on this?
Thank you very much, Chairman, yes, I did. There's one point that the report doesn't quite touch on and I just wanted to highlight to you that rented accommodation plays a very, very large and important role in the housing market in Waverley. Both private and social landlords are required to carry out safety works as and when a property becomes vacant or void and before the property can be let. So, through no fault of their own, they end up with a period of time when they cannot let that property. This void period means a loss of rent and additional costs for landlords which they cannot avoid and it's therefore in their best financial interest to let any property as quickly as they possibly can. Waverley, in fact, have a target date of 20 days. As an indicator, Waverley had roughly 300 voids from January to December in 2018, which cost this authority approximately £50,000 in council tax with no rent coming in. Might I encourage the ONS to consider recommending to the executive that all private and social landlords should retain the exemption from council tax for a period of one month? Please, thank you.
Any comments, officers?
No, no, Chairman, I think councillor King's proposed an alternative to what's in the report, so I presume you want to allow members to discuss that?
Yes, members, but anybody who should discuss, I mean, I must apologize, you should have offered the opportunity first of the committee, but anybody who should speak? Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, I fully support this. The purpose of doing this is to ensure that properties don't sit empty for months and months on end while there are people who need places to live. But obviously, there is a time delay between perhaps all residents moving out, work's being done and the property's being filled. So, yeah, I'd be quite happy with councillor King's suggestion, of course, it's up to the committee, however.
Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I think the table on page 76 is very apt and tends very much to support councillor King's suggestion. We're clearly well out of kilter at the moment, giving people six months and 28 days or a month I could go with. And, you know, occasionally, one has to say, well, perhaps many of the others have perhaps got it right and we need to move towards them. I wouldn't die if we made it zero, but I think a month is not unreasonable.
Anybody else wish to speak on this?
Yes. I would also agree that that sounds entirely sensible and is in lockstep with that. I think it would, a month or 28 days would absolutely be sound. I just have a quick question about the structure of this committee. Is it normal for the two executive members to be coming in discussing this, proposing things in an ONS, bearing in mind their recommendations that the executive will then be voting on, just as a point of clarity for me? Thank you.
As I understand it, Councillor, this is something which was recommended way back before even I was elected, even before you were elected, Councillor, so I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, 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 I think, well, I think it's just...
It just intrigues me that a report has come to us where members of the portfolio holders and officers have not managed to come to some unanimous proposals in front of us, but there we are. I think it was good to hear from the portfolio holder in particular, her views on this particular aspect and interesting to see it was supported by the finance portfolio holder. So, I think we hear what they say. I think it is up for the members of the value for money ONS committee to say whether they agree with that. Comments from others who are not members are interesting, but I do think we need to specifically ask members of our own committee as to what their views are before we actually decide on the recommendations.
Right, okay, I think Mr Taylor wanted to say something?
May I take that up with separately afterwards? Thank you.
Mr Taylor, did you want to say something?
Only to provide some reassurance that the overview and scrutiny and executive protocols do allow for is the discretion of the chair. So, at the chair's discretion, executive members may have a dialogue within an overview and scrutiny committee meeting and, of course, the same is the same at an executive meeting and that's where you have members of the scrutiny committee coming along to the executive meeting and at the chair's invitation are allowed to speak. But it is very much for the chair to decide, but obviously he will need to listen to his committee members as well as to how they want things to proceed.
Councillor Seaborn first and councillor...
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I picked up on this and there's basically the list of Surrey tariffs, which, you know, we're out of kilter now and if we were to change to the proposal, we'd be out of kilter again. We've gone from overly generous to overly harsh. Or there's the direction of travel, which seem to be all our neighbours, which are on the harsh side. I'd assumed that officers and portfolio holder had agreed this in advance, but if that doesn't appear, well, it doesn't appear to be the case and I'm very happy as a member of the committee to reiterate the suggestion that's been made by the portfolio holder. I would be prepared to support that because it's, you know, it's for a year. If the direction of travel is towards no discounting, then we can easily get there in a year. It will cost us a little bit in the short term, but at least we won't be out of kilter with the rest of Surrey. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd also like to support the portfolio holder in this proposal, I think it's a very sensible idea. However, I have one other issue to make and that is on the, on paragraph 17, the 300% extra council tax imposed on landlords who have empty properties for more than 10 years. I'm just wondering how much of that money is actually paid by the landlords or whether they just decided to disappear? It seems to me if you've got an empty property for nine or 10 years, you have no intention of ever renovating it. So, I don't see you're going to be paying your council tax.
There's one house in Surrey, it's been vacant for 20 years, wasn't it?
So, Chairman, what we do find, at the moment, we have the 50% premium and actually quite a few of the 148 properties there are owned by people who don't struggle to pay the council tax premium because they've got a home that they choose to have. We wrote to everybody with a long-term empty home a while ago and some people wrote back and said, if I want to have another home in the borough, I will. And that's, you know, that's up to them. So, some of these are owned by developers who sort of bought homes a long time ago and haven't got their scheme moving as quickly as possible. And so there's a premium at the moment once those homes have been empty for two years. But what the government did last year, as the report sets out, is allow councils to do even more to try and incentivise through financial means, i.e. ramping up the council tax, incentivise not just landlords, this is landowners, homeowners. In fact, it's unlikely to be landlords, it's much more likely to be just private owners or developers who are slow in developing these properties. And so the government's sort of saying to councils, you can sort of ramp that up over the next few years. And if someone wants to hold a house for a long time empty, then they will need to pay a lot more council tax and that might just trigger a decision to bring it into occupation.
I'm detecting no opposition to councillor King's proposal, so I think I'm happy to make that.
It would seem to me I'd be in favour of it, so unless anybody's got a strong objection, okay, we should...
Councillor Opton.
Yes, Chair, I'm in favour of it as well and I notice that our senior executives past counties are the ones that don't give any discount whatsoever, so take a point from that.
Fine, accepted. No, okay, right, okay. Right, before, it's the last item, we'll take a little bit of prerogative there. I think we ought to remember as local government, I've been in the Local Government Association Affairs and whenever I go up there, and I am going to get sort of political now because everyone speaks at local government, whether they be Conservative, Labour, Liberal, Democrat or independent for that matter, all say the same thing. I'm just going to read something to you. In the last eight years, this is from the OGA statement moving the conversation on, says in the last eight years, councils have lost 60 pence of out of every pound of government funding for local services, a reduction of nearly 16 billion by 2020. By properly funding local services and giving councils the powers to work on behalf of the communities, local government can be the driving force for a new chapter in our country's history. I think we all agree to that, don't we?
This is the usual item we have at the end of what every overview and scrutiny committee meeting is the work programme. You'll see the agenda for today's meeting on, sorry, I've got my own printout, so I'm not sure which page it will be on for you, but page 82, thank you. And then we've got the next meeting in February, so we've got, as you can see on page 82, some of the quarterly sort of regular items and then there are the ones for February as well after that. So, there are quite a few items in February, lots of them time-critical that I'm spoken to the Chair and my Chair and they're obviously keen to keep on. But I'm happy to take any suggestions from the committee as always for future items or I can, happy to be emailed or called if necessary, but it's just to raise awareness for that, attention to that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Could I just raise that we have received an email from the post offices today about Farnham Post Office and perhaps ourselves with the Chair of the community group, we can discuss, in fact, calling the post office to a committee to us. Has anybody else any comments? No? My word. Agreed then, okay. Members are invited to consider the work programme, I make any, no, okay, can I, can we go on to that? Okay, right, there are no items to consider in exempt sessions, so that concludes. Okay, right, there are no items to consider in exempt sessions, so that concludes the senior meeting.